We have a little bit of logistical issues to confront is really part of our agenda. So without further ado, I'd like to call a meeting order. We'll call this.
Mayor Downey.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Kidd.
Here.
Councilmember Brooks is not here, but I anticipate she will join us soon. Councilmember Collins.
Here.
Councilmember Gates. Councilmember Meredith is not here this evening. Councilmember Weddell.
Here.
Thank you.
I've invited Councilwoman Weddell to lead us for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of allegiance is the United States of America and should be honored for which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. As you can see, our ranks were somewhat thin this evening. We have some matters before us in our agenda that require as many members of the council as we can gain. We also have Mr. Collins who will be exiting our meeting by about 6:45 so.
Mayor, I believe it'll be 6:30 because you'll be starting a public hearing.
Well, we'll try to figure this all out, Brad.
Okay, I'm hoping you can do the consent agenda before 6:30.
Well, we'll see how this all is going to go. We also need to get item G ordinance. The 2017 budget amendment number one requires a minimum of five votes for approval of any budget. So we'll do the best we can. So let's go immediately to the public comment period, up to 15 minutes. I only have one individual who has signed this and it doesn't indicate, I believe the name is Creelman.
Yes.
Do you wish to take a moment to speak? That's too happy to do that right now. Your name and your address, please.
James Creelman, 1101 Second Street. I wasn't planning on speaking out of respect for the council. I would have come up earlier, but I've kind of come up here on that. And so what I'm kind of concerned about, it has to do with the, they're talking about doing the hotel, which I think is great downtown. That seems like a really good deal. But when you go back in the years and you take a look at the way things were handled with previous city council members pertaining to the manner of what's the Gateway Center was handled, the way those property transactions were handled, and it kind of seems to me that that kind of needs to be recognized. But what it has nothing to do with anything is the relationship with the city council versus the city attorney. And they've talked about this going to a second-class city, which if things are going to be done the way they were done in the past, I totally support it. Because that means you guys are governed by law out of Olympia. Whereas in the past, the relationship with the city attorney, and that's really kind of a rye, because why do we have an attorney to tell you guys to hire attorneys to defend you? And so the relationship between the city attorney and the city council, if it's not changed, if they're doing something different, then I totally support the second-class city. I've seen corruption, I've got the paperwork, you know, I've seen how the money was handled and everything. And it's like, the way it sits right now, the way the structure is, if the relationship between the city council and the city attorney was terminated, then there would be no need to go into a second-class city. But well, there's a city attorney that represents only you and none of us, then the second-class city is the only way to go. And when you look at the numbers, and I'm familiar with real estate and whatnot, and the names downtown, and when you look at it, like downtown's getting ready to break loose. I think it's really going to be good. But there needs to be some sort of a relationship change between the city council and the city attorney. I don't even know why you have to go here when repeatedly he has advised the city council to hire an outside attorney. The thing over the speaking and procedure with Councilmember Kidd, I mean, that was the stupidest and silliest thing there ever was, to hire outside attorneys and go through that procedure. It just doesn't make sense, you know? Myself, I totally support the second-class city. I put half a million dollars into property and development in Fort Angeles, and I'm not putting another penny into it for my own time. Until that relationship is changed, there's absolutely no reason to put another penny into it. Just sit and watch what other people do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wished they could have signed the paper, did not? Seeing none, I have to, again, we have some logistical concerns here tonight. So we'll conclude this first public comment period, be reminded that later on in our agenda, we have a second opportunity to offer public comment. I'd like us to move, well, I'd like us to move to the, is there anything, is there any item on this or future agenda that member of the council would like us to be brought up at this time before I move to the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to discuss, we've got a filing week coming up soon. Our next meeting will occur during filing week. I would, if we could probably roll this out at our next meeting in two weeks' time. I don't know if a motion would be necessary as too much of a, maybe possibly a public statement from council that we will be providing full printed agendas to all registered candidates. So in case they'd like to participate, follow along closely, that we could provide the printed material. It's pretty expensive to print out a bunch of copies until November to stay relevant with what our business is.
Mr. Mayor and council, we can make sure that happens.
Mr. Mayor, please. Welcome to the sitting.
Thank you, and my apologies, I just got back from Fort Campbell, so the weather, I thought I could make it here on time.
Okay, again, without further ado, let's go into the consent agenda. Now, Brad, you're with us, are you?
I am.
Is Mr. Gates on with us?
Take item three off the consent agenda.
You were asking to take number three off of the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to talk about it.
Mr. Mayor, no, I don't believe Councilmember Gates has joined the conference bridge yet.
Okay, let me read the consent agenda as it presently exists. City Council amendments April 18, 2017, standard year report April 8, 2017 through April 21, 2017, in an amount of $1,773,103.88. Fluoride advisory ballot resolution, and report as its Ford Committee citizen-at-large appointment of Steve Bearman to the PA Ford Committee. Any comments or questions?
I'll move the agendas, Brad.
Second.
I would like to comment to the question, please.
Yes.
I just want everyone to know that this is the fluoride advisory vote ballot going forward that'll be on this, I believe this November's general election ballot. It's only an advisory ballot. Consequently, it's only as good as this council is, this present council. So this advisory vote, in my opinion, is only good until the end of the term of this present council. But we are listening to the voters, we're bringing them forward. Item number three, that Councilmember Collins wants to further discuss, is our ballot resolution in support of the second-class city petition. I want to again bring this forward to talk about that we're listening to our constituents. Thank you.
Okay. Most have been made in second and all is in consent agenda as presently read. Please say aye.
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 Close if any. Okay, Brad, we're going to go back to consent agenda item three, petition to reclassify as a second-class city ballot resolution. You have any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I wanted to clarify a couple of things. One, in all due respect to Mr. Creelman, I'm not sure that the city council would operate without a city attorney, even if it was a second-class city. I think he misunderstands how the city attorney works. But I did not want to vote on it in a consent method. I wanted to discuss it. I think that the second-class city is a bad choice for the community, and I don't want to support it. And I believe that the petition is legally incorrect, and so I'm voting against the petition resolution going on the ballot.
Anybody else who would care to comment on this, please? No, thank you.
I do. And there's a lot of things I agree with Brad about, is that I don't think this is a good petition. But it was a petition that was put forward and the people signed it. So we have a lot of citizens that have signed this, and as a matter of protocol, we have enough signatures, it needs to go up for the voters. So this has met that level of the law, and so therefore, to make sure, to ensure that people's voices are heard, this will go on the ballot. Again, I don't agree with the ballot measure. I think we should not go to a second-class city. But again, this was something that the people moved forward, so it needs to be brought up to the public for them to vote on. So I will be agreeing to put the petition on the ballot, because that is what the people have wanted to be done.
Deputy Mayor Kidd.
I also agree with Councilmember Collins. This is second-class city, is why would we go back a hundred years? Why would the people who signed this petition, were they told they're losing their right to petition? I mean, it just doesn't make sense. So it's going on the ballot, I'm totally against it. I will be informing my friends and neighbors that it's a very, very bad choice. So I hope it's resoundly defeated, but it's a terrible idea. But I, we're going to go ahead and put it on the ballot, and I hope we get a resounding help, because we would give up home rule and so many opportunities. You can see how Fort Angeles is moving forward, good things are happening. If we were a second-class city, we'd just be stuck and couldn't move forward. So, anyway, thank you.
Before, I want to make sure to do it before. Mr. Collins, do you have any further comments?
Well, I just wanted to say I agree with both Councilman Brooks and Councilman Kidd, and I understand that that position. It's just that in the past, when we had the public opinion poll on fluoride, and I was not supportive of it, I was held as if I had somehow agreed to the public opinion poll on fluoride. And so I want to make it clear that I don't support this petition.
Okay, and again, Mr. Gates has not joined us, is that right? Okay, all right. Yes, you can start over.
Yeah, thank you. First chance to speak to it, actually. I want to hopefully have a little, speak with a little clarity. I'm not sure that the public's getting our message. What I know of as a council member is that there's some legality involved as far as the actual wording of the petition. There sounds to me like there's concern from a few council members of the legality of the wording. But I think what is plain to all of us is the intent. And that's why we're going forward with the intent of the petition to ask the citizens about becoming a second-class city. So I too don't support that. I think we would lose rights as citizens of Fort Angeles. But I do want to know, I do want to let everyone know, I believe the council, and we've moved this forward, we've acted on it two weeks prior also. We do support this petition, though there's legal concern about it. But we do, I do think I can speak for all of us, we're listening to you, and that's the intent going forward. Thank you.
Yes, I would concur with you. I think there's a clear message from the council both this evening and previous at our meeting of April 4, that the council wishes to respect those citizens that will have the opportunity to weigh in on this matter on November 7, I believe it is. That's okay. Okay, I'll go back to consent agenda item E3, petition to reclassify as a second-class city ballot resolution.
Motion is read.
Can I second him?
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close if any.
Aye.
Oh, yes, Brad, thank you, okay.
Can we move to item G of the agenda?
We are exactly where we're going to go.
Can I ask for a vote as recorded from the city clerk on that?
For the prior motion?
Yes.
It was approved four to one with Councilmember Collins opposed.
Great, thank you.
So just a quick question. Are we moving that rather than, I know we've got some folks for the medic one here.
Yes, this is a week. We have some logistical issues. Brad, I was coming, Susan. Dan is not with us. We have a budget amendment here. It's item G on your agenda. It's 2017 budget amendment number one, requires a majority of Rosa and Rosa to approve a financial matter in this respect. So please, John, to go back at G1. And Serena, who's going to?
Cindy. Cindy Jensen, interim finance director, Serena's out. This should look familiar, this is the second meeting. We presented it in detail at your last meeting on April 18. It is primarily a housekeeping measure, often the first one of the year is. We're carrying forward things from last year's budget that weren't quite done. And there was, there were some capital changes in capital budgets to match to the capital facilities plan. So if you have no more questions.
Well, we're going to conduct our second reading and then move to.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, this does require a supermajority, which would mean each of the council members present would be going in favor of this, if that's to be supported this evening.
That's correct. I just would make the one observation, Cindy, that as was mentioned in our earlier presentation on the capital facilities plan, these budget items we deal with, they are, I mean, every day that you and the finance department are dealing with things that come up. I mean, this is a living.
Yes.
Changeable situation. And I'm impressed that you can stay on top of these things so well, with as much clarity as you all do. I think it's extremely impressive, actually.
There's a good staff watching them.
Do members of the council have any specific questions here? Let me, I gotta find you.
It's G6.
Yes, it is, that's a jabber. And let me read the ordinance. Is the ordinance of the city of Fort Angeles, Washington, a mini to 2017 budget funds? If you need further comments or questions, we can still.
I don't approve of the budget amendments read.
Second.
Okay. Councilmembers in favor of the budget amendment number one, please say aye.
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 Close if any. Okay, I think Nathan, that's a major corner. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat, I would, I'll stay with the meeting as long as I can and listen to the public hearing, but I will be leaving before 6:45. I apologize for my conference schedule.
It's okay. We have kind of a.
Thank you for calling in, Brad.
Appreciate your participation. I'm going to go back now to public hearings, which we're going to probably get a little hither ourselves here, but that's going to be okay. We have a public hearings. First is an ordinance proposing amendments to the medic one utility fee. We opening a public hearing and conducting a first reading on this matter. Sheriff DeWitt has come to the roster.
Sheriff, it's G.
What did I say?
G, you gave them up.
Is this where you bring donuts or something?
Point of order, Mayor, and that is that I don't think there's a problem in starting the public hearing before 6:30, that we can't close the public hearing until after 6:30, because someone might be planning to be here at 6:30.
Well, this is going to be continued until our meeting of May 16, too.
Oh, okay. But it's still an order for someone that traveled all the way here to close the public hearing until after 6:30.
Okay, that's right. Okay.
We're good.
I'm far chief.
Thanks. So Mayor, council, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thanks, Brad, if you have to be revealed, I'll take it personally.
Okay, yeah.
So thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight to present. I'd like to give a kind of brief overview of where we are. I apologize to Councilman Brooks and Councilman Lou. This would be pretty much an exact duplicate of what we saw at the UAC, but sort of, I apologize. I'm kind of a one-trick pony, so there's nothing more for that. Basically, where we're at. Yes, where we're at. Back in late 2015, the city was evaluated by the Washington Survey and Rating Bureau. And Washington Survey and Rating Bureau is an independent organization that evaluates fire departments' fire suppression capabilities for cities throughout state of Washington. And when they do these evaluations, they provide a score for the fire department, a score for the city, that is basically used by insurance companies, the majority of insurance companies, to set insurance, fire insurance rates for the city. And so Washington Survey and Rating Bureau is an independent organization. They come through, they take a very long look, it takes about three days. They look at everything in the city, they look at the water supply, the hydrants, the pumps, the reservoirs. They look at everything to do with getting water to the city. They look at the dispatch procedures and, they look at the fire department, they are, and they look at our training, they look at the dimension, they look at equipment, our station, our personnel, they look at everything. And then they give us a rating, we rate the city one out of 10, with one being the best you can be, 10 being essentially no fire protection at all. There are no fire protection organizations in the state of Washington that are classified as a one. City Fort Angeles for decades has been classified, excuse me, as a four. Okay, this is not the right. So at the result of that inspection that they did back in late 2015, the Washington Survey and Rating Bureau recommended that we be downgraded from our four to a five. That's not something that we wanted to happen, because it would have resulted in insurance, fire insurance rate increases for the majority of the customers in the city. Thank you. I failed A.D. in high school, so. So basically, if the insurance rating had gone from a four to a five, the average commercial business in Fort Angeles increase would have been about 10% of their rate. Because the average residential increase would have been about 5% of an increase. We didn't want that to happen. So what we did was we went to the city council, and we said, we don't want this rating to go down from a four to a five, so we proposed a plan that we brought to the Washington Survey and Rating Bureau. We had set a parcel of that plan, we addressed the major things that they found insufficient within the fire department, and within the residue of courses in the city that we were, that they looked at. And we put that plan into place with council's support. And then in February 2017, the Survey and Rating Bureau came back and they said, thank you, you've done a good job. We are not going to lower your rating. We're going to stay at a four, which was great news. Everybody liked that, it was a great thing, that's what we wanted to hear. The problem with us is that we met their requirements for the short term, but we could not meet their requirements for the long term. And one of the requirements that we could not meet for the long term was staffing for the fire department. We have known for years, many, many years, that the staffing in the fire department is inadequate. We cannot meet the needs of the community, and we are hard-pressed just to meet the daily demands that we meet every single day. And it's difficult, and it's getting more difficult every day. We've known for years we need to address our staffing. The Washington Survey and Rating Bureau inspection simply confirmed that. So why do we need to look at our staffing? We need to look at our staffing primarily because our call volume is going through the roof. If you look just at this graph, you can pretty much see, it's just incredible. We came almost to 4,800 calls last year. I look today, we're already on a pace to meet that, to beat that this year. Forty-eight hundred calls from a single station from two minutes puts us, there's a run survey that's done every year throughout the nation, that puts our tiny little station here in Fort Angeles about the 40th busiest fire station in the entire United States, which is pretty incredible if you think about it. It is an amazingly busy department. We are running from call to call to call to call, and they're doing one right now. It just never ends, 24/7, 360-degree, and it's getting busier every year. The problem is, we haven't added staffing in 26 years. So the last time we added a person to the fire department was in 1991. In those 26 years, our call volume has increased 257%. So if you look at it, it would be like a restaurant serving 257% more customers without adding any staff. The hotel, adding 257% more rooms without adding any staff, it's just been incredible. We have not added staff, but the call volume or workload has become absolutely incredible. It affects everything we do. And the primary thing, it affects our training. So fire department, you need to train as a team. It's kind of like baseball, you know, a baseball team trains as a team. They don't bring the outfield in one day and the infield in another, and pitchers, everybody trains as a team, you work together as a team. We can't bring one person in, have them trained, and then expect them to be able to work as a team. It just doesn't work that way. So in order for us to accomplish any kind of training, we need to hire people on overtime. We need to bring in crews on overtime, both to cover the calls, so that we can have a cohesive unit to train. I don't believe we've had a single four-hour period in the last two years that we've been able to train to go through as a team without having to bring in people on overtime. If we don't do that, then we run the risk of L&amp;I consequences, we run the risk of injury, we run the risk of all kinds of problems, safety problems that go down the road, and we are nowhere near as efficient or as effective as we can be. Have to train as a team. In order to do that, we need to bring people on overtime. So we're asking people to work extra hard while they're pure, and then on their day off, asking them to come in. And I know that overtime is kind of nice, people like a little extra money, and after a while, no one wants it. It's just too difficult to work. You have to be able to spend some time with your family, some time away from work. The training is definitely suffering because of this. Our prevention efforts are also suffering big time. We simply don't have the time or the manpower to do the prevention work that we need to do. Our prevention is incredibly important. So when you see the firefighters, they come into your business in town, and they're doing an inspection in town, so they're doing three things at the same time. Number one, they're inspecting the business for fires, for fire hazards. We don't want businesses to have fires. It's not a good thing for a business to have. businesses to have. Sixty, seventy percent of businesses that suffer a fire never come back. They simply go out of business and don't come back. We don't want that to happen. We want Port Angeles to stay a vibrant business community. When our guys will win there, they find something that can stop a fire, that's a good thing. That's what we want to have happen. The second thing that they're doing is they're getting out in the community, they're meeting the people that they serve, they're becoming familiar with the people that they serve. That's a great thing. But the third thing they're doing is they're getting into those buildings during the day when they can see what's inside. So for instance, if you're on the, you know, a hobby shop, for instance, and they come in and they do an inspection, they're seeing what's inside the building. They're seeing where the exits are. They're seeing what's in the basement. They're seeing what kind of fumes there are. They're seeing what the roof is constructed of. They're seeing whether there's a basement or not. If they have to go back from that building at 3:00 in the morning and it's filled with smoke, they've got an advantage out because they're familiar with that building. They've been in it before. They know what's going on. Prevention is incredibly important. And they're providing an opportunity for public education as well. They're telling people, hey, look, you don't want to plug 18 things into a single plug. It's not a good idea. We see that stuff all the time, but we're just not able to do it. And we just, when they're running from call to call to call to call constantly, all day and all night long, can't get anything else done. And those are things that we're mandated to do. Training, we're mandated to train. We've got local, state, and federal requirements to train. If we can't meet those, the city's liable. It's just not a good deal. So our short-term plan to address this was to hire people back on overtime. We need to try to maintain a minimum of five people on duty every single day. We implemented that on January 1st of 2017, and it has been tough. It has been extraordinarily difficult to keep five people on duty every day. We are paying an enormous amount of overtime. It is very difficult to get people to work. It's very difficult to work on shifts. The other day, I had a very difficult situation that came up where the ship ran 17 calls during a 24-hour period. Seven of those calls came in after midnight. They were up all night long, very, very, very asleep. At 8:00 next morning, someone called in sick because he was injured. I had to hold one of those personnel over, mentor it overtime for another 24 hours, after just having worked a 24-hour shift without a break. That's incredibly difficult to do. And so efficiency is affected, safety's affected, everything's affected. Good situation to be in. It's a short-term situation that we cannot continue with. The other thing that we did when we implemented five-person staffing was we changed dramatically the way that we operate. We made a sea change in the way that we operate this fire department. We basically have no longer 24/7, seven days a week staffed fire engine, which is absolutely horrific if you think about it from a fire department's standpoint. We don't staff fire engine 24/7. We now staff two first-out medic units. Majority of our calls are medic units. Majority of our calls are EMS-related, so we're running a call after call after call. Those medic units are running up and down the street, but we do not have a fire engine that is staffed. Now, of course, if everybody's in the station and the fire call comes in, they're all gonna jump on the fire engine. But it's incredibly common for both medic units to be out of the station at the same time, and essentially there's one person left. It's not a good situation to be in. We're hoping to fix that to a certain degree by July. We're ordering a smaller, more efficient fire engine that can be operated to a certain degree by a single person. Not perfect, but at least a little bit better. So, one of the other things that's happened with five-person staffing, though, and by enabling us to have two first-out medic units, is that we have dramatically reduced the number of times that we have to call in off-duty personnel and volunteers to staff the station. So just the way that it works would be that, right now, for instance, one of the units is on the call. If we got a second call right now, the second unit we go. If we got a third call, we have to call in off-duty career personnel and volunteers to staff the next unit. It happens all the time. You can see that in the first three months of 2015, that happened 67 times. First three months of 2016, that happened 71 times. Now that we've changed our staffing model, it's only happened 23 times. Every time we do that callback, you call back those personnel, that's a delay for the response. You don't want to be that third person who calls 911 because there's a delay. We've reduced that now by over a third. That's a great thing. The downside of that is we're no longer staffing that fire engine. So the good thing is, insurance rates haven't gone up. None of you have gotten insurance rates that have gone up because of this. That's great. Your rates would have gone up, but you would have gotten nothing for it. All they would have done is charged you more. You wouldn't have gotten better coverage. You wouldn't have gotten anything for it. You're getting a better level of service from the EMS side. Those are good things. The cost of it, though, is that it's not sustainable for us from a personnel resource side. We just simply can't begin to do it from a personnel issue. Overtime is just amazing, unfortunately. So, in February 28th of this year, we went to the council again, and we said, council, look, we need some help. We need to add personnel. WSRB said we needed to add a minimum of two. If we don't add two by July 1st, 2017, all bets are off. We go from a four to a five, insurance rates go up. We have to, by their mandate, at least hire two people. We asked for at least three or four. We also went to council and said that we would fund this. The proposal for funds would be to increase the medic one utility. Medic one utility funds paramedic firefighters in the city of Port Angeles. So if you look at your, your medic, your utility bill every month, you pay a certain amount of money for medic one. It's like any other utility. It's structured like utility. The rates are structured like a utility. So for instance, on your water bill, if you pay a base rate for your water bill, if you use 100 gallons or a million gallons, you pay a certain base rate. But if you go above that minimum round, you pay more because you use more. Medic one is structured the same way. Everybody pays a base rate, but the people who use medic one more pay more for it. And we have some users in the city that use medic one all the time. And so they pay more for it, which you would expect to have happen. So the council gave us direction. They said, go on to the committee, talk to the people who are gonna be affected by this, find out what kind of input you can get, provide as much information as you can, find out what people think about having to pay more on their medic one utility bill in order to fund additional personnel. So we did that. We went out, I met personally with the highest users in the city. You can imagine the highest users in the city are the assisted living facilities in town. Assisted living facilities have a population that clearly are an older population, a more infirm population. They can use us quite frequently. So we went to the various assisted living facilities who told them, look, this is what's coming. We don't like it. We don't want it. Nobody wants to pay more, but this is what's coming down the road. Then we met with all of the private large apartment buildings within the city. They're also ones that would be affected this by this significantly. And I talked to all of them personally. Every one of them, every one of them personally. We also did a bunch of outreach on the radio. We did a bunch of outreach with the business association, with the lines from the OS club. We face, have this all over Facebook. The union has gone out and put out information about this. We're meeting with people all the time. We're telling them the truth. We're telling them, basically, we're hurting, we need people, and that's gonna cost more. I have not been sugarcoating this in any way. And when I've been going out and talking to people, I've been giving them the worst-case scenario. The feedback I've been getting has been overwhelmingly positive. There have been, there has only been one issue, that we come up with one facility that has an issue with us. I'll talk about that in a little while. But overwhelmingly positive. People know that they need us, and they know that they don't need us today. They need us tomorrow. And they know that we're always going to be there for them. And they also know that it unfortunately costs money to provide the service that we provide. So the question is how much? If we added two, it costs about $187,000 a year. That would meet the minimum requirements, but that's it. That would be like putting our finger in the bag. It would basically meet the minimum, that's all. It would not really provide any additional capability for us to meet the prevention and the training requirements that we need to do. It would really be a temporary fix, and we'd have to be coming back to the council within a year and say, it's, we need more. If we added three, it would cost about $181,000 in the first year. Again, it would meet the minimum required. The good thing about it would be enable us to stack that fire engine for about 60% of the time, but still, it doesn't enable us to provide any real flexibility in the way that we operate. The optimum for us would be able to provide four personnel, four firefighter paramedics. The cost of that is about $375,000 a year. That would meet all of the requirements that we'd have to meet. It would enable us to stack that fire engine at least 60% of the time. It would enable us to meet the training and prevention requirements that we have. It's really, quite frankly, is what we need to do. So the question is how much will it cost? This is the hard part. I'm not a salesman. I'm a fire chief, but the bottom line is, it costs money to provide the service. And again, I didn't want to sugarcoat it. This is what it is. So what I'm showing you primarily are the residential and the business owners, because these are the primary rate users within the city. There are about 11,000 utility rate payers within the city between businesses and residential. We are proposing a two-and-a-half-year rate adjustment. We'd start hopefully in July, finish out the rest of this year, then a adjustment in January, then another adjustment in January 2019. So how would the rate change? Right now, a residential customer pays $6.28 a month. We would talk about increasing that to $6.99, which is 71 cents a month. By the end of 2019, it would be $7.34. For a commercial customer, they'd pay $6.82, but it would go to 8.07. That would be for two firefighter paramedics. And I'll just skip four because this is really what we're asking for. Basically, the residential rate would go from $6.28 a month to $8.11. It's about a dollar eighty a month. About 24, about 22 dollars a year. Commercial rate would go from about $6.82 to $8.80, which is about $2 a month, or less than $24 a year. By 2019, that would go to $9.61. These are the user classifications who use the system the most and how their rates would change. So if you look at assisted living facilities, their rates would go from $2,900 a year to $4,100 a year. So again, we're looking at well over $1,400,000 or $1,400 a year. This is for the classifications who use the system the most. We run frequently to them. So we have classifications for both family homes, assisted living facilities. There's one 24-hour nursing facility in town. There's several group homes. There's several jails. There are eight schools and 11 major apartment buildings. And then the city pays as well. So the question is, why would the city pay itself? The issue would be that if we run to a park, if somebody gets injured in a park, or if we run to a vehicle accident on a city street, those are calls that are billed to the city because the city owns that property. City's responsible for that property. So the city pays its fair share as well, to a large degree, as you can see. The city's share would go from $19,000 a year to $28,000 a year. So again, like I'm saying, based on very positive input, we're asking the council to approve a rate adjustment to allow us to add four firefighter paramedics to adjust the system medic one fee. If in fact we did that, and we compared ourselves to medic one utility rates throughout the rest of the state, we would still be at the bottom of the scale. You can see, we would be right down there on the grade scale. It's fourth from the right. And the next closest below us is Bridgeport. It's below us by about 3 cents a month. Bridgeport is kind of a strange, kind of outlier at $3 a month. I'm not sure how they, how they do that. It's a very different sort of organization. They only run several hundred calls a year. I suppose around 5,000. So again, even if we went to the highest increase, we'd still be at the low end of the scale throughout the rest of the state. You can see, if you were in Aberdeen, you'd be paying $22 and a little bit more than $8. So again, that just shows the same thing here, like 2019. And again, this is showing the increase for four personnel, what we'd be looking at. For the different assisted living facilities, and again, the residential living facilities go from about $2,900 to about $4,500. They're paying more than their fair share. More than their, than their fair share. So, look, one thing that's changed since the last time I met with the council was that we did receive input from the Port Angeles Housing Authority. Port Angeles Housing Authority houses in two of their units the most needy people in the city. So the people who are right on the line, who are, many of them are Section 8 personnel, but the people who have the lowest income, who are basically one foot from being homeless, are housed by the City of Portland Housing Authority. They do an incredible job. They provide an amazing service to the community. They provide housing for the people who need it the most. Unfortunately, they would also be affected by an increase in the medic one utility rate. So they contacted me when I talked to them about this, and they said, this would be difficult for us, Ken. Is there something that we can do to perhaps mitigate the increases that we will be faced with? And so I've been meeting with Kay Cassinger, who's their director. I've been talking with her several times. And I told her that I would come to the council tonight. I would tell you that that's the situation of all the people in the entire city that we've talked to. There were only words about an issue with this. They simply cannot pass rate increases to their tenants. Their tenants don't have anything to give. But we do believe that there are some potential fixes for that. And so what we have now tonight, we would be looking at a first reading of the proposed ordinance. We would then come back to you. Any input that might come from the public input tonight, any input that comes over the next two weeks, and then we would make any fixes that we might need for the ordinance when we come back to you two weeks from tonight. My proposal would be that I would, in the interim period of time, work with the housing authority to come up with a solution for them that would help them to be able to absorb the increases that we're talking about. We have several options that are available right now, and we should be able to work something up that'll help them out. They're the only organization that had an issue. It was amazing. I, I kind of sigh, but when I recall people or talk to people, and I say, this is what we're doing, every single person, without exception, every apartment building, every assisted living facility, talked about how, you know, you guys just dealt with my mom. You guys just dealt with my dad. You guys have been dealing with my cousin for the last three months. It's just, it's, you can't swing a cap this town without hitting somebody who hasn't been affected positively by medic one. It's incredible. Every person in this city has been affected by medic one to some certain degrees. And the good thing about it is that you're not just getting paramedics, which are great. You're getting paramedics who are trained, cross-trained as firefighters. And you see these people back there in red jackets. They are, without a doubt, the most amazing people you'll ever deal with. They are highly trained, highly competent, highly compassionate people. They care about the city. They care about the people in the city. They care about their jobs. And if you want to do the best that possible you can, the problem is that you're stretching yourself, and that, something's gonna break. So that's where we're at. Again, I thank you again for your comment. Any questions from council or any?
Really, I think we'll move to having me read the ordinance, and then we will open up this to a public hearing, which will be continued through the beginning of May 6.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe your mic is on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had. So I'm gonna read the ordinance, and then we will open up this to a public hearing. The ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, a mini type of 13, chapter 13, 47, 3 of the portages we listed accordingly, related to medic one utility rates. I'll open this up to a public hearing this evening. Anybody who would care to speak to this matter?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, can we excuse the chief? We're not gonna take questions. The chief's not taking questions. So should we let the chief relax?
Yes, Ken, you can go back.
Oh, sure. Great.
I can join you. So please state your name and your address.
Narrowly Smith, P O Box 2498. I'm assuming that these increase in calls, I actually did have a question. These increase in calls are from paramedics? It's, is it overall fire calls or is it paramedic calls?
I asked that same question, and I got that it was a little bit of both, but it was mainly medic.
So I mean, so there's.
Has, okay, perfect. Has the council considered adding a soda tax in this town? It would be like 1 cent per ounce or something like that? Because a lot of towns around the country have imposed a soda tax to use for certain things, especially city health. And it's been, actually, it has not really affected too much. People seem to go along with it. And if we did a penny or two penny per ounce for sodas, for all sweetened sodas, including artificial sweetened sodas. including artificial sweetened sodas, that might be able to cover the problem with the Section 8 families. I realize this is a huge problem. I realize that we have an aging town, most of our houses are older. I know our downtown is a huge problem, because there are no firewalls between the buildings. So I think that if we could, I don't see why we're stopping at four, I think we should probably double that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I thought I saw someone, yes, Laura, I had you up there.
I'm Laura Dodd, 228 Bachelorn. I am also the administrator for St. Andrew's Place Assisted Living, and we frequently use the medic one system. In the 15 years that I've been at St. Andrew's Place, they have always been professional, compassionate. They respond to my residents and my staff, and we support this rate increase wholeheartedly, even though we'll be affected financially pretty substantially. And we just want the city council to know that even though we're not-for-profit, we don't have a lot of money, we want to be behind our community and our firefighters, and we hope everyone will do the same.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this matter? Please, come forward.
Mr. Mayor, can we check to see if Councilmember Collins is still with us?
Brad, are you still with us? No, he thought he could hang in there until about six forty-five, so.
So he's exited the meeting.
It's very kind of him to hang in there as long as he did.
David Mayberry, 1014 Georgiana. I am a city resident. I live near the hospital, and I quite frequently listen to you guys. I, as a resident, fully support this increase to four firefighters, and I would like to say that it's just, I want to get up and say that we support you guys. You know, as residents, we support you. I've never met anybody that would say anything against this. So thank you, and thank you very much for your work. We appreciate you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Okay, this matter will be continued to a meeting of May 16th. We appreciate your attendance tonight. May I say in closing, oh, I think there's Amy back there, you are our heroes. You save lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our second public hearing this evening is capital facilities plan, which will again open up a public hearing, have a first reading, and it too will be continued to a meeting of May 16th. So there was a brief presentation made earlier today to the council. Some of the audience I see were there. The council room is turned to F11, I think, I see that second. So I think, Tess, is that where Tess is? There she is. Or is it Cindy? Whichever.
Yes, we had the presentation earlier, and the capital facilities plan, it has been put together, and it has a very comprehensive link to the comprehensive plan. And there's a matrix in the back of the book that shows how each of the projects tie into the comp plan. This is just a first reading and a first hearing, and we're already making edits on this book. It was a draft, and we're still making some changes to it. So at this point, we would just open it up for a public hearing, and then it would come back at the next meeting for action.
I'm going to ask every... I don't share all these...
Do you have to keep your mic on?
I'm not sure how much this document weighs, but it's, that's how big it is.
This is the first draft. For those of you considering running for city council, this is your bedtime reading. It's mine, an hour.
Let me read the resolution, and then we will open up this to a public hearing. Resolution of the City Council, the City Port Angeles, Washington, adopting city's capital facilities plan for years 2018 through 2023, which includes the city's transportation improvement program for the years 2018 through 2023 as well. I would invite any of you who are, who would like to speak to this capital facilities plan document, please come to the broadcast room and state your name and your address. You don't all have to get up at the same time. Okay, well, I don't see anyone. Just, we are, we will be continuing this public hearing to a meeting of May 16th. Let me make the, I want to invite the members of the council, if you have further questions, and the staff, please feel free to make the turn ahead a little bit.
I just take this moment to inform the residents of Port Angeles, this too, like all of our policy, is a living document. So in the future, if this needs to be slight change, slightly change that we can in order to possibly qualify for something that staff would identify. So again, this is living document, we can change it. This is just a plan, so staff can make the appropriate action, absent of the council being in the same room with them.
Deputy Mayor Kidd, and then I'd like to take to, take the, to Sissy Brook to speak to the link between our comprehensive plan and this document, because I know it's very important.
Just wanted to follow up and thank Councilmember Winter for that explanation. Our capital facilities plan is a plan of, we have so many things we'd like to do. And in the past, the city council would put every wish on the plan, and the plan got so huge, it was just, people would look at it and said, you know, that's just, that doesn't even make sense. It got so, so we, it's a wish list, and as we have funding, we take care of it. So we have a new department where we put things that are unfunded. It's called "in the parking lot," which means, gee, it would be nice to do this, but since we don't have the funding, we're going to stick it in the parking lot. It's not a realistic budget item at this time. It's something we would like to do. So it's on a list of things that would be nice to have. So we actually only do the projects that we can pay for. So we've updated the list where it actually makes more sense, and it's more readable. So I just thought I'd mention that. And I appreciate the staff doing that, because it used to be a little confusing. Thank you.
Sissy, Councilmember Brook has spoken well to the concerns she has, and we do as a council, to link this document to the comprehensive plan, which is our guiding planning document that puts into our vision and our hopes of what the city may look like in 10 to 20 years. So Sissy, would you just take a moment to share your thoughts in how this all is going to be?
And I do want to appreciate staff for making sure that the link is there. Yes, to me, the comprehensive plan is truly the document that is going to lead us into the future. You usually make a plan, and then you follow the steps in there. So one of the things that we do is we spend money to know that we are heading towards that vision. And so the more we can link a plan like this to our comprehensive plan, begins to ensure that we start achieving the vision. So one of the things that I know that we're going to be working in the future with staff as well, is to making sure that the measures are there that prove that we're actually moving in that direction. So having this plan continue to tie is critical for us to move in the direction that we want to move. So I want to invite all of you guys to read the comprehensive plan that is on the webpage, and to help us continue to amend it and modify it. That too is a living document, to make sure that we get to where we want to be. So thank you, staff, so much for making sure there is a link. Like I said, we want to move forward to make sure that we can measure the fact that we are actually getting there. So.
Thank you, Sissy. Okay, again, this matter will be discussed further on our meeting of May 16th.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to express one, we certainly would very much appreciate questions and comments on the plan prior to the second reading, so that if there are adjustments that need to be made, that staff can tackle those in advance of the May 16th public hearing and adoption of the ordinance, or adoption of the resolution. Additionally, I think it's important to note that some of our council members were not able to make the presentation earlier this evening, so staff will go ahead and send out that presentation so that everyone has a copy of it, and certainly we can make that available to members of the public that might have interest as well. But I do specifically want to thank the finance department for their diligence and ensure that those links are there, and working really hard to ensure that we have integration with the capital facilities plan and the budget into the future. And I think it's a great step in the right direction to really link those documents. We have a significant work plan item moving forward this year where we're also linking the comprehensive plan itself and providing updates that ensure it links with both the strategic plan the council recently did, as well as the budget capital facilities plan and other related documents. And as Councilmember Brook mentioned, performance criteria are extremely important to make sure that we have metrics in there that are measurable, and that the outcomes of the capital facilities plan enhance and actually implement the policies we see in the comprehensive plan itself. So thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Nathan, by the way, is our active city manager in the absence of, city manager down in the key who is out of town on city business. Okay, that takes us to item I, other considerations. It's a discussion on an IT server purchase of the city, is that?
Yes, yes, it's all started out. This is actually a good news item. We had previously asked for council permission to spend about $125,000 on an information technology server replacement. But before we could actually get them ordered, the vendor was no longer an authorized provider through the Washington State Contract Program. So we went back to the drawing board, and after reevaluating the needs, the order is being redrafted, and the cost is being reduced to only about $55,000 for two new servers from the $125,000 that was previously approved. Jim Harper from Information Technology is here and is available for any questions.
Does the council have, yes, please, Deputy Mayor Kidd.
Yes, well, this is good news. It is. Anytime you expect $125,000 expenditure, and it comes down to $54,173.57, including taxes, I move to approve the purchase of replacement server hardware for new server hosts in the Mount House. As I already said, $54,173.57, including taxes, from the Washington State contract vendor Dell Inc. She said it was the update.
Yeah. And I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made. And second, are there further comments from the council?
Thank you. Thank you for providing that.
Those in favor of the motion to stand, please say aye.
Aye.
All is a bing. Thank you. Other, under other considerations, I too, is the Parks and Recreation Department, David Walters, from the state of T.C. County.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm excited to be here tonight. With me tonight is David Walters from the Positive Recycle Technology Center. He's going to be doing the presentation with me. We have a project we've been working on with artists and business owner Bob Stokes out. So we're excited to show you what we've been up to. The city of Port Angeles Parks Recreation Department has a memorial program signed in 1991. It really started out with benches and trees, and it really grew to a program that wasn't managed very well. Next thing you know, we had a ton of benches and trees along the waterfront trail. In 2003, the program was seized because they needed to restructure itself. So the 2005 Recreation and Unification Commission developed it and helped develop a new policy, and the program was reinvented and put back out. But it never really took off like the original program did. So in 2013, upon becoming director, we put a hold on the program. The reason why we put a hold on the program is because of the lack of space. The waterfront trail has too many benches and trees, and we tried to get folks to go into some of our other parks, but it wasn't, it wasn't a success, like, because everyone wore on the waterfront property. We also didn't have time to develop the new program. Putting the park back together in 2013, we've been working on a lot of things, and it was just, this was a matter that's going to take a little time, because there's a sensitivity aspect to it. People have benches that are normalized for people and their loved ones, but we want to make sure that we reach out to them and get feedback and input on our new program. And we also wanted to make sure we picked a bench, a style that fit with what we were doing, and so we didn't have multiple types of benches in each and every park. So we wanted to standardize everything. So along the trail, 1991, actually, 2003, you see the wooden benches here, they're in terrible shape. We have worked on them over and over again. We'll place them more, sanding them down, re-sanding them. I know we've done it at least three times, because I've personally done it two or three times. Just along the trail itself, we have 127 benches. I figured that we probably, within our park system, have about 200 of these wood style benches. In 2003 and 2005, when the program was reinvented, they started selling this plastic type of bench. And again, it just, it doesn't have a very good peel to it, and never took off. I think we only have two or three of them in our system, to be honest with you. Then Bob Stokes in the downtown, bought 24, actually 25, one has not been installed. These type of style benches, which you will see downtown and along West End. So moving forward, how are we going to change this? How are we going to improve our program? Bob made an appointment with me one day, and we sat down, and he says, "I got this idea." And I said, "Tell me about your idea." So he told me about his idea, and we went out to meet our CRTC. We had multiple meetings with them to talk about projects that we could try and implement within our park system. The first thing we did was look at a new style of bench, and use carbon firewood to do that. So the city, we liked what we were up against, we had funding within our original waterfront trail memorial program, and we invested $10,000 to do two prototype benches and molds. And David can tell you a little bit more about that process later on. And so once we get going, this Parks Recreation Department will be working on their new policy, but it's going to take us a little bit of time, and we'll have a timeline later in the presentation. So with that, I'll introduce David Walters, COO of CRTC. Say that to me.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Very much a pleasure to be able to be here with you this evening. Thanks very much for your dedicated service. I appreciate it. This is really cool. This is an exciting little project, and I'd like to thank Bob Stokes for the design and the idea, and all of Corey's hard work and the team. I really feel very good about this, and hope we can convey to you a couple of ideas here that we have, and some of the technical pieces that go along with it as we go forward. So I wanted to just cover our mission briefly. I haven't had the privilege to review with you in a little bit. We've evolved quite a bit since last year, when I last... a bit since last year when I last spoke and so wanted to share our mission. And that's to inspire and grow the global composite recycling community through innovation and technology and manufacturing that transforms carbon fiber scrap into products that positively impact people's lives and our environment. And we think this bench would fit very nicely into that mission statement. Our vision is by 2022 to divert a cumulative two million pounds of carbon fiber composite from landfill and also get ourselves to a 1 million pound per year run rate. So, that's what we're driving with right now. And a great shot of our, of our, when we were down there in the last, it was a great opportunity back in August of last year. Core values, I wanted to share these with you because we haven't had a chance to chat on this before, but we build relationships which are founded on dignity and respect for all with a little teamwork because we actually do people rock and we do whatever it takes, but all we love. So, those are the three things that we build by. A great shot of the PC team there, we work very closely with them. All right, so let's talk about the bench a little bit. So, again, Bob Stokes was a consulting designer and an artist, a beautiful bench here out of carbon fiber. We can manufacture that using recycled aerospace grade material that we get, very strong, very light, very durable, also very easy to assemble and install. It's going to be installed in less than a month, so very fast to put up and it's a beautiful bench. Low maintenance, so never rots, scratch and abrasion resistant, can repair it and heal very quickly, which is good. Graphene resistant, notice I don't say graffiti proof, that doesn't mean it can't get graffiti on it, but very easy to clean, move off or any kind of salt can do that or power wash it. Vandalism proof hardware, the vagrancy strips would be on there already to kind of prevent people from wanting to sleep on the bench. There'll also be skateboard stops on the front if you desire and it'll have good protection up against the UV and salt water, so it'll be perfect for the park. All the benches would be made here, they would be outsourced. We think if this can get up and get going, it would be about 10 more team members that we would need to add to the CRTC with family wage jobs because we would be looking at this type of bench outside of just this opportunity. We think this is a good fit for carbon fiber, looks like it makes a lot of sense. It would also be a great place to utilize our PC grads, so as students come up and come through the advanced manufacturing class, this would be a great fit for them to be able to work on and we will need production workers to be able to do this. And also see, you know, like I said, developing this for outside of just the PA opportunity could really help to revolutionize the, the park and rec industry because there isn't a carbon fiber bench on the street. Made in Cordellus, that'd be great. And a great green story because again, this would all be recycled aerospace grade carbon fiber that was destined for landfill, great way to repurpose this and I think you've heard me share before, there's about 50 million pounds of carbon fiber that goes into landfill locally. So, that's a lot of material and so we want to find a way to reuse that, keep it out of landfill, help to create jobs and help improve people's life. So, we're going to make a couple of test panels, so we're working closely with Cory and Bob and the team. This is going to go out into a couple of locations, which I'll show in just a minute, but it's to test out different materials and see how carbon fiber compares to stainless steel, to a powder coated aluminum and to engineered wood. And so, we'll test that for graffiti resistance, scratch resistance and cleanability just to be able to prove the carbon fiber is really the right material here. We're pretty confident that it is, but this is a good way to test it out. We're also going to coat the bench, so while you see the bench is, is black here because of the carbon fiber, there's 90 colors that we can put on, so you can pick your choice of color. Makes a very hard finish, it's one of the additional things that gives it the added durability and cleanability, but would assume only one color per location, so you probably don't want different colors across all the benches in a given area. It probably would be one color that we pick per park or however you chose to do it, but we would have 90 that would be available to you. And then also the ability to memorialize, so you can see in the back panel there, we built in a recess that would be able to hold a memorial plaque that we would be able to insert in. If you wanted it without the plaques, that's fine, there wouldn't be a spot for it, we would have just a different back panel, but it would allow for the memorialization program of course. And then also, this is kind of cool, this is another thing that we kind of thought about, was the ability to also customize and include different graphics in here depending on what person that's trying to memorialize wants to have. So, for example, if the person being memorialized was in the Army Corps, you could have an Army logo or you could have a Marine logo or someone's picture or whatever. And then you could see on the side there, down here at the bottom in the leg, that's a great place to put the City of Cordellus logo and go on either side of the leg, I think would add a nice classy touch and be an additional thing. A lot of national, doesn't have to be, but again, just offering this up, this was something that people found value in. Because again, we want to try and make this as customer friendly as possible because people are going to be paying good money potentially memorialized, so wanted to give them that kind of capability. And then this is the leg assembly. Can we have the...
Yes, sir.
Share with you. Bob Stokes did a great job of kind of putting this together and...
Thanks for the moment.
Yeah. Kind of secretly, she's like... But the assembly would be very fast and again, as I mentioned, it's going to be very simple for the maintenance crew to be able to put that and install that and so... And then these are the location of the two prototype benches, so as Cory mentioned, there would be two benches that we would develop to be able to test out the material and test out the installation, get everything perfected. One would be in Webster Park and the other would be at the transit center. I think those are good high use applications, would be a good test around cleanability, longevity and the like in those type of areas. All right, so Cory, I don't know if you talked a little on that forward.
So, moving forward, we've already confirmed that we're going to do two prototypes. The two test panels, one's going to be at the skate park and one's going to be on the waterfronts. We have a couple of areas that are high used that we feel that people can touch, feel, scratch, do whatever they want to them. July, they're going to build the two benches and in August when the benches are complete, we'll bring it to council, do a little show and tell, show you guys what they look like. Again, one prototype of the gateway, they just put kind of a rest stop there at the gateway and so I was talking with Kevin, he goes, "You have really want to put a bench there?" And I said, "Give me a month and we'll get, get you a bench there," so I think it'll be a good spot. Webster Park, as we saw, all there was was a pad there because we removed at least six benches that were there because of the vandalism to them, we just couldn't have them in that park anymore if there were issues we ever had. So, that would be a great one to put back and I know the community will be excited about that because they get called about it all the time. And then we're going to evaluate until October, see how they do, see how they look. And then by then, we hope to finish up our new policy, which is going to take us some time, so it's optimistic that whoever, December of 2017, will get that developed. I'll work with the Parks Commission on that as well, as well as city staff, and then we'll moving forward, look at my adventures as part of the memorial program. David spoke to it a little bit, but as I mentioned, you know, the original, one of benches, park benches are at their expense and to get going and to do the two prototypes is going to take a lot of hand building, I would say, from the first company until we get the manufacturing aspect to it. So, we're investing in this and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with David on the project. And well, one thing I will mention is that when we started talking about this, I just got really excited because it's not just about park benches. There are so many things out there in the park and recreation industry that are amenities that continually get vandalized, ruined and it's a continued waste of city's taxpayer dollars, continue to try and fix things, try to replace them. So, there's, this is just a start, I feel, about park benches and I really think there's a lot more of that cost that we can do as well.
David and Cory, up at the podium, any words that the council have any questions or comments?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you. I think that's a great idea. I do have one of your paddles.
Oh, good.
Pickle wall paddle and it's been great and it works really well, light, so I'm hoping that that's going to happen with the benches as well. And I know, I know I've been asking and maybe we also move into those foldable chairs so that they can be outside and, you know, be, so, you know, that they're easy, light, you know, like you said, there's many applications for parks now, maybe that might be appropriate. But I think this is going to be a wonderful test case, so thank you.
That's very exciting. Appreciate it.
Well, I think this is a wonderful idea. It has tremendous potential. I, our family has a bench that was created by Mr. Stokes and it's really beautiful. I'm excited about this prototype project. So, Cory, let us know as soon as they're out there so we can go through.
Great idea, great presentation, great to see this coming forward to potentially help our community. Cory, I didn't hear any costs or budget analysis done on this, is, any numbers involved dollar from the city budget, that's my point of asking.
So, as I mentioned back in 91 to 2000, about there, there was the funding that was created from those original benches was placed in an account for about $20,000, which would only be used for large for trail needs. It's just been sitting there every year. So, to get this program started, we took $10,000 out of that fund to evolve this, so it didn't come out of any other recreation accounts.
I just wanted, and I had a feeling, that's what I heard, but I just wanted to bring this forward to prevent some naysayers that say this is, and I see this as a good thing. So, I'm fully behind it, the way to go and I, great, hats off to all of you guys that are, all people that are involved with this.
And I can say that moving forward, of course, we don't know what eventually CRTC is going to be able to sell the benches for, but talking with David because we invested, because we have done the molds and invested at $10,000, is that even if you've got 50 orders for California, City of California, we need 20. Our rate would be lower to sell the benches at our purchase of benches.
Thank you. I think also too, Cory's shirt, the cost on this in the end will be less, absolutely convinced of it because it's not going to rot and maintenance will be easy, you can power wash it, there's just a lot of positives. I think when we do the lifecycle analysis, the economics are...
I would make this observation of the city, I listened to your presentation. I'm thinking the great movie, I saw many of you probably remember seeing, Music Man?
Ralph Lauren.
Yes, and Music Man, the great, the wonderful band, the orchestra, the greatest marching band in the country was right there in River City. And I, this comment is directed to Cory, of course, too, but to David, I want to tell you on behalf of the council, on behalf of myself, I commend you for you and Bob and others at CRT campus for continuing to be innovative, for looking for opportunities. You know, this, you're right, this is a great opportunity and members of the audience and I'm just so impressed. And we have a company right here in Arbor City, if you will, that is, it's, you know, gaining a reputation from extraordinary stuff and we're just beginning to see what the potential, where your potential lies, David, that you would be willing to share your time and your talents and expertise with our city, I think it would be really welcome.
Right, that's very kind of you, certainly a great team effort and sort of whole with Cory, Bob and making a half, I guess, right?
Thank you. All right. It takes us to item J, contracts and purchasing, quote unquote, simple steps, master service agreement amendments, that's Patrick, with Jane, one. And in the absence of Fred Fulton, we have a new page to read. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Shalee Shereh and I work here at the City of Orlando Power Systems. Mr. Mayor, council, I speak on behalf of Fred Fulton as his, our city business. These proposals are making three amendments to the simple step smart savings energy efficiency program, the shorted background button program, the city campus created in the simple step smart savings energy efficiency since 2010, the April 10. And the payments, city payments with clear results are used to mark down prices in LED, CFL, hardwired, wire fixtures, low flow shower heads and energy efficient appliances and local retailers. As of March 31st, 2017, just over 1,038,000 lighting products, estimated savings of about 2,450 megawatt hours have been achieved. All the proposed amendments are eligible for reimbursement under EPA's energy efficiency incentive, resulting in no net program cost to the city. These amendments, additional city payments cannot exceed $260,700, those are the proposed amendments. Amendments are to extend the participation in light bulb and shower head markdown program to December 31st, 2017. The second one is to renew participation in appliance program of $1,500. And third one is to add another program, which is to provide a leaky bulb and shower head kit to any city resident who requests it through December 31st, 2017, up to a total cost of $259,200. On April 11th, I'd like to add that on April 11th, the Utility Advisory Committee voted a favorable recommendation towards this proposal. Any questions?
Yes, anybody have any questions?
Yes, sir. Well, it says that add an LED light bulb and shower head kit to be distributed to any city resident who requests one. So, how are we marketing this information so people know how to get this free kit?
Right, so, according to this proposal, clear results would be working on the marketing aspect of it. We would be developing an online portal and the logistics of this are in works and we'll see what would be the best way for outreach. We have been having ITOs for people, this is information about energy efficiency, these talks have been holding throughout the year. As a matter of fact, that one happened right today in five through seven. These are the outlets that we'd be using to bring this, this program to an outreach by, along with that, we have clear results as our partners who have, who develop online portals, we have other social media outreach programs that we'll be using.
I was thinking more in terms instead of online portals, some of us just, you know, opening the utility bill, we might have some information in our utility bill, a little pamphlet that this is free.
Right.
I mean, that would, that goes to all of our free usage.
Right, and the utilities, the stuff that is also part of the outreach program, which I mentioned.
Super, thank you.
Ms. Chiu-Wen.
Thanks for your presentation. I'm the Vice Chairman of Utility Advisory Committee. Yeah, we talked about not only putting it in the actual bill, but also making it available online, several different forms. The message the folks need to hear is that there's over a quarter of a million dollars worth of energy savings that can be utilized through this Bonneville Power Administration. Basically, it's a grant and it's helping us cut down on our electricity. It's not only just the light bulbs and the shower heads, but there's redates for appliances if you get the Energy Smart Port. There's an entire list of things that qualify for. I would urge if you're in the market for any of these type of devices to look into it further. This is part of the Bonneville Power Administration, part of their way of doing business. I, I would imagine this was all negotiated with the, with the dams that are put in on the flood and snake rivers, so I just wanted to throw that out to make sure that if you're interested, by all means, help yourself, this is available to everyone that lives in the city.
I guess it was on Saturday, Friday or Saturday, Jane and I went up to discover a little box on the, delivered two and a half hours on part of this program.
This is a part of that problem, yes.
And what was remarkable that within 24 hours too, about all the light bulbs in the house burned out. So, I want, Jane and I thank you very much for your perfect timing.
Thank you.
Sissy, too. Have a nice year, Dan.
I'm just saying that, yes, when we met, everybody was really in agreement with us. There's total support for it and I think it's a great program.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I've moved to that we approve and authorize the city manager to...
I move to that we approve and authorize the city manager to sign the amendment, and any subsequent amendments with agreement with clear result to make any minor modifications as necessary.
I'll second.
Motion has been made in second. If further comments before I call for the vote. All those who agree with the motion as stipulated, please say aye.
Aye.
Close if any. Thank you. Again, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, councilmembers, I don't recall that we excused Councilmember Gates and Councilmember Meredith, so at this time, I propose I move that we excuse them.
My apologies, I have discretion to that earlier.
A word to the wise, Halibut season starts Thursday, May 4th, and we're going to see some increased traffic in town. I, I'm going to officially call that tourist season is going to start this, probably tomorrow. So you're going to see some expensive boats coming into town. Hopefully parked in front of a bunch of motels. We're going to have maybe seven days, but there's Thursday and Saturday, the 4th and the 6th, we will probably continue to have folks in our town over the weekend. Thank you.
And I want to thank the Councilor, the Commissioner, the Councilman, the Chair, helping focus the discussion, and you're both of you to be committed for your service. One of the pleasures that I have had as mayor is to, as some of you have been here too, our council members, we, council meetings, we have presentations and proclamations. We do sometimes, the council member, the council meetings, it's always a treat for me to participate. I've also had a particular pleasure recently, thanks to the cooperation and leadership of staff members of the city to provide further recognition and service lapel pins to a variety of committees that meet. The most recent of which is the Public Safety Advisory Committee, who works very closely with members of the police and fire departments in communicating with the public their concerns and just letting both sides to know what's going on. It's just been a, just a pleasure for me to, to be able to do that and to recognize these individuals in a very somewhat personal way. That's been my highlight since we last met. That takes us to information, information reports from the city manager, acting city manager.
Mr. Mayor and Council, tonight, there are three items that I'd like to highlight for you that are information. The first is that on May 9th, city staff has put together a town hall meeting on opioid addiction, as council has requested. Chief Smith has a memo for you in your council packet this evening where you can learn more about that scheduled meeting. It will be taking place in council chambers. Additionally, I wanted to highlight the fact that it also in your packet is the new City of Port Angeles newsletter. I can tell you that City Clerk Jennifer Venaclosen and Cory Delacott, as well as Emily Martin from the Parks and Recreation Department, worked very diligently to get that new newsletter put together. And I will tell you that it is part of an overall communication plan to increase communication to the citizens in our community. And it is a really good, positive first step that will also involve video in conjunction with the Peninsula Area Public Access programming, as well as social media exercises to really promote and get the word out about some of these stories for the City of Port Angeles. And then finally, I know that Director Fulton would greatly appreciate and join me in mentioning that May 15th through May 20th is National Bike to Work Week. That's something where Mr. Fulton has worked a great deal to put together different events with local businesses so that the cyclists are supporting our local businesses throughout the downtown and throughout the area during this event, as well as, you know, having a bicycle-friendly group that, that is promoting bicycling to work. So those are the three items I wanted to mention this evening, and that's all I have for you at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Nathan. That takes us to our second public comment period this evening. I have been just presented by our city clerk, Jennifer, several names here that I think would like to take a moment to take, with the opportunity to provide a public comment. I want to clarify that, though. I have the names of Eloise Kaelin, Harvey Kaelin, Levane Luce, and Andrew P., I'm not sure the last name.
Pittman.
Pittman? Okay. You're right, if I read that right, it's going to come out certainly. So Eloise.
I'm hiding over here.
Are we on? Yeah.
We can hear you.
Right, it's on. I'm Eloise Kaelin, I'm Chair of the Authorization Committee for Protective Independence Future, and Chair of our Order and our Choice. We go by 2418 SWIM. This council, to its credit, on April 18th, 2017, unanimously responded to the petition of over a thousand of its constituents to place choice of government on the ballot. The underlying motivator for the citizen petition was the lack of recognition by the council of the importance to individuals to control their own medication. Fifty-six point six percent of city water rate payers in 2016 voted disapproval of authorization of city drinking water. These same people have been involuntarily medicated from 2006 to 2016. A city council in 2016, nine of whom vote on the first ever initiative ever offered in the VA, one signed by over 2,000 of your constituents, an initiative which would stop authorization. I have sent in a copy for your records of the signed petition sheets, in hopes you will recognize friends and neighbors and heed their request today or in the next week or two. Champions of the present form of government cite the powers of initiative and referendum in the courts. Alas, that is proven to be illusive. Need for change of government would be substantially reduced if this council could pass a resolution requiring an adequate open of the common period for all committees and subcommittees of the council, per RCW 3518. This council now may see fit to avoid election on authorization, bypassing the initiative titled Medical Independence Act as a city ordinance. We would like one small revision in section one, and I've detailed that in our written submission. We have submitted to your record the signatures now of over 2,000 of your constituents as signed on that initiative in 2006, and ask that you adopt the Medical Independence Act as a city ordinance. Please restore the dignity of these citizens and their ability to control their own medical treatment. Certainty on this contentious four-eyed issue is the way forward to a calm and measured approach to dealing with a change of government issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Harvey Kaelin.
My name is Harvey Kaelin, I live in SWIM, 1608 Lane, and I was here two weeks ago addressing you on an issue relating to the fact that the living peninsula is ground zero in the event of a nuclear war. And if it was a one-off thing, I wouldn't, I'd be appalled to stand here today and take it up again, because it'd be wasting your time. It would be, you know, an aberration that the United States would just attack some country, and if it was a one-off thing, and history, then no reason for me to come back here today. But in point of fact, over the last two weeks since last I spoke to you, the world situation has seriously deteriorated, and it's unprecedented. I'm 70 years old, I've never seen the likes of it. I'd like to quote a Professor James Gilligan, who was the Director of the Harvard Institute of Law and Psychiatry. He said, "I've worked with murderers and rapists, I can recognize dangerousness from a mile away." You don't have to be an expert on dangerousness or spend 50 years studying it like I have in order to know how dangerous this man," referring to Donald Trump, "how dangerous this man is." And, you know, I say, well, what can the City of Port Angeles do about it? But in point of fact, we could be doing a lot. And the first thing is to stand at the peninsula, if you people would simply pass a resolution of solidarity with Korea. It's a peninsula, we're a peninsula, and they're under, you know, grave imminent danger, and so are we. And if we stood in solidarity with them and said, "We want to be a nuclear-free zone," and we want Korea to be a nuclear-free zone, that would reverberate all over this country and all over the world. And get up on wire services if you did that. Even the daily news, which likes to bury the news instead of report it, would have to report it. And I think it could materially affect, it would be, we would be the leaders in fighting back against a man who's thoroughly deranged, criminally insane, and no longer even properly to be called the President of the United States, he's simply an international gangster. And so, you notice the fire, I was in the fire department 11 years, and I always answered the call. I had 600 calls in 11 years, I didn't wait. If you're on call, you need to respond to this really serious matter. Thank you.
Levane Luce?
To me? Okay. I'm basically here to talk about a rental property that I have on 113 South Valley Street, that I had a problem with and needed help with. The problem is at the moment is that I had a, I had a person, I'm seeing with them, and I have to work on those spaces as cheaply as I can so I can get to it. So when I wasn't there, my house got broken in four times. Moved lady in, just watched over the place until it was done. Coming for some done well because I have a neighbor who basically doesn't want to have any neighbors, wants to make everybody, everybody's life a problem. He's called 30 times to the police. He called in a motorcycle tearing up and down the road, and it was my four-year-old son on his Hot Wheels motorcycle, electric motorcycle. And just as just an example, right now, I might be lucky on my property to work, but I have work orders somebody to get electrical inspections, setting inspections, to tear down the whole house, be done, but I have no ability to go on property to do it. And keep in mind, I don't live in this home, so the power being off is really, I mean, I had another house, so I have it since vacant as is, but they, they moved it so I can't move property because there's no power. So I paid for the power. Or this is set, they're not going to turn it back on. They went inspection, did the inspection trend, came back, New York then. I ordered them to have an inspection given tomorrow, but all they got was, well, we need to get all the people and we'll see if we can, in fact, talk to somebody to see if we can get together and approve on this. It's been a month. I'm not, I'm not a monk now, I'm able to do this problem. But I own the home, and I guess I'm just looking for a council to make you call to where I can go to my own house, my own rental property to work, that just they'll get it done, get what they're asking me to do done. At the time, I think there's, they're going to show things that I haven't, that I haven't finished yet, because I'm doing the property definition, and I think I'm really looking at that. I know this sort of labor process is now, and I'm just, I had totally a lot of stuff to do. I don't think it's been holding anything to play.
Yeah, Nathan, can you address any of this?
I'd be more than happy to address it. I'm not sure if this is the most appropriate word to address it, but I will tell you that we have had a specific code compliance case in this neighborhood for well over a year. And as council is aware, when there are neighborhood issues, where an entire neighborhood is being impacted by one code compliance case, it is a priority for the community and economic development to ensure that we're enforcing. So we have been enforcing for over a year. There are a number of issues on the subject property that we are very committed to working with Mr. Luce to resolve. In fact, Cleaning Manager Brecky and myself met with Mr. Luce last week. We created a plan for moving forward of how we're going to ensure compliance, and we're going to continue to follow through with that, and we're committed to do that, and I'm more than happy to meet with Mr. Luce again if that's helpful.
If I may, when we spoke, we said that this was to avoid payment proceeds, but three days later, you filed for payment proceeds. Am I right?
That's not correct.
So you did have to arrange it, James? Well, I talked to Tim today, you said you didn't.
It's true.
I'm just saying, but this is the kind of stuff I deal with. I get a lot of people going bull, there's all these issues, all these things. The reality is, I never received the first letter. And then he came down, he asked for, I lived in the house, I walked him around, he said there was, I got a text in that phone, or excuse me, I got an email saying there was no, no proceeds, no, it was fine. All of a sudden, now it's proceeded.
Listen, Mr. Luce, I, this is not, this period of public comment period, we have made the call. I think members of the council are aware of the sensitive nature of this matter. I want to simply encourage you to continue to communicate with Nathan West and others within their department. I have, we have considerable confidence that Mr. West and his staff will address this issue as quickly as they possibly can. Further discussions is not, are not appropriate at this particular part of our agenda. Please stay in contact with him. Thank you for being here. Your point is well taken. Andrew Pittman.
My name is Andrew Pittman, I live at 3916 Niagara Place, in Los Washington, 98362. Is this an appropriate time to discuss my support for the Medicare tax increase?
Yes.
Okay. So I've lived in the city for about 12 years, seven years of this residence, and before that I lived in Swims. I've never much utilized the 911 system. I've been a frequent service provider in the 911 system. Port Angeles Heart Department has saved my father-in-law's life when he had a heart attack three blocks over. They had to have to write a shift change, so they showed up with a little bit extra personnel than they might, might normally have at the station, that, you know, maybe a different kind of, I don't know, so many people there, and due to their quick reaction, and I still have a father-in-law today that's even getting the grandkids and such. So I know that a lot of people are on a fixed income in this town, and I'm on one of them. I have a pretty awesome job, I work at the Seattle Fire Department. So I just want everybody at the city council to know that my tax dollars, I firmly support the fire department here, and, you know, with things like Halibut season, and I know that there's been a huge influx that I've witnessed living right up next to the entrance to the national park, visitors coming here for our beautiful scenic area, and I want those people to have the services they need if they do have a medical emergency. I think it's a small price to pay to get caught up. I think we're severely behind in the 911 service department in this area, and it's not a unique problem. Like I said, I work in Seattle, and there's a lot of other areas around, but... Like I said, I work in Seattle, and there's a lot of other areas around, but if we don't start paying now, we're going to, we're going to pay with lives later, and it's just something I feel very strongly about. I've got four kids that I plan to raise here until I retire, and I want them to have the opportunities when they're in public school, that if we call 911, they're going to show up. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Andrew. That concludes the names I have on this list, is there any, is there anyone else who would like to speak, your time is yours.
Hi, Mary Smith, Gia, Box 2498. I actually have a question. Do we have a non-sense for the city to handle conflict situations like this previous speaker? Because that would certainly be a good idea, because I know how difficult it is when you get caught between different departments, and you don't completely understand how things work. A lot of cities just have someone who's appointed a senseless to explain things and to smooth things out. It's a good idea. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, seeing none, the chair would entertain the motions for adjournment.
Your turn.
Our turn, gentlemen. Thank you again for being there, you see none.